Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mayor Sarah Jefferson convening the special call meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me in the room there are Mayor Pro Tim Holmes, Councilmember McKiver, Councilmember Cook, Councilmember Moore, and Councilmember Harmon. For our discussion, we have a number of items. First, we'll have our library department overview. Then we'll go to an overview from our city attorney, and then we'll go into closed session. With that, we'll invite up Ms. Sizemore, who's here with us, who's our library director. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Mayor, did you all adopt the agenda?
We did not adopt the agenda. Let's adopt the agenda first. Is there a motion to adopt? So, a motion made by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Cook. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the agenda? All those who favor the closing of file are saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Our agenda is adopted. Alright, now to you, Ms. Sizemore.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to briefly go over, uh, overview the library. You all basically know what we do, some of the highlights, some of the things that you may not be aware of. Um, we do have one facility, you know that. We don't have branches, so outreach is very important to us. So, we have two outreach vehicles, we have three technology access points, and a remote return and hold pickup, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. The technology access points, you probably don't know what those are, but those are small computer labs that we've had for years at South Side Rec Center, Macedonia Family Resource Center, and at Community Development on Fourth Street. So lending services, they're the folks on the first floor. You see when you walk in the door, they do all the things you would expect them to do. But a couple of things I want to highlight, the upper right-hand corner is our drive-through window, and as far as I know, I think we're the only library in North Carolina that has a drive-through window. It was a savior during COVID. Um, we see about 600 people a month use the drive-through window, and in the bottom left, that is our remote access point at Deep River Rec Center. And those are 40 remote lockers. If people prefer it, they can pick up their materials there instead of driving downtown. We started out with just 20 lockers about four years ago. We got with a grant. It's so popular that we bought 20 more about two years ago. We also have six self-check units throughout the library, two on the third floor, one on the second, one in children's, and two in the lobby. People love those, and the people, the lending folks like it a lot because it cuts down on the lines. Uh, this past fiscal year, over 108,000 items were checked out by the customers themselves, and that was up nine percent over the last year. Children's services, I think we have the best children's services department in the world. They are amazing, the things that they do. They try very hard to offer a lot of opportunities for kids to explore new things, find out what new interests they might have. So you see, we have all kinds of, of very specialized clubs that kids can participate in. The chess club is one of the most popular. We first had it once a month and twice a month, and now it's every week, and it's packed. Kids just love it. Innovative services such as Bar and Experience, and I'm not sure if you know what that is, but that is a program where kids and families can check out a four-pack of tickets to the Children's Museum, the zoo, the Rockers, the Carolina Core, a whole variety of attractions in our area. And it gives a lot of people the opportunity to experience things that they would never be able to otherwise financially. And even the Tanger Center is participating this year. They also give opportunities for kids to volunteer, even as kids. The Junior Friends Group, that's about 25 kids every summer that run the summer reading program. And the Book Buddies, that's a new program they started where older, like elementary school age kids will tutor first and second graders in math and reading. Research services, they provide the traditional reference services that most, that all libraries do, but they also have very robust programming presence, especially in health business and job and career development. We have one-on-one job assistance. People walk in the door wanting to apply for a job, they don't even have an email, so our, one of our business librarians will just take them step by step through the whole process. And it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful service. And I selected these pictures to sort of demonstrate the different ways that people use us. The upper left, those are the traditional live, things you would expect, books, computers. But people more and more are coming to the libraries to meet other people, to work in groups. They're looking for a place they can have, do a job interview or telehealth. So, and we just don't have enough small spaces. So, this year, we purchased our first meeting pod, and that's something on the right. It sees four people, it's pretty much soundproof. We've had it since the middle of July, and it's in constant use. And then in the bottom left is our technology outreach fan that should be hitting the road soon to provide services in underserved neighborhoods. And then the bottom right is a community puzzle that we have on the second floor. People like to just sit there and do a puzzle together. We have a little coloring area that people gather and just relax. We have something similar on the third floor. And the third floor is Reader's Services, which is, would be recreational activities for adults. We have, of course, adult materials, but they do a lot of music programming, they do literature programs. But one of the most important things that this department does is manage our growing digital collection. People are still reading books, and they're still checking out books, and you'll see that in a minute, but they are really into our digital collection, which grows and grows, and it takes a lot to manage. So that department does that. We also have a homebound service that operates out of this division. People, they, she takes them to the individuals' homes, senior facilities, and they also do services and programming for developing disabled adults. Sometimes they'll go to their facility, and sometimes the individuals will come to the library. Technical services is the people you never see, but they're probably the most important people in the building because they process every single thing that we own, digital materials and physical materials. They maintain the integrity of the database because if it's not right in the catalog, you can't find it, we may as well not have it. They are the receiving department for the library, they're the nice people that let you in when you hit the buzzer at the, at the staff entrance, and they keep the staff trained in the use of our library integrated system. The Heritage Research Center is on the second floor, and it's very specialized research in local history and, and genealogy. They have an incredible reputation across the state and work with people not just in our state and community, but all across the country, especially those working on family histories. They're also a great resource for other city departments, and they, like, they are called upon to find out maybe historical information about a piece of property or a building or something like that. So they have extensive vertical files on High Point history. And then the Farmer's Market. It is not a division, but it probably could be, it could be its whole department. We are very proud of the market. It's been in its current iteration since 2018, when the city invested all this money to help us create a gathering space, and also a way to help address the food insecurity issues in our community. So, we're EBT certified. We have a Double the Bucks program, which has been sponsored by Bethany Medical for the past four years. Um, we have, we have a partnership with the Guilford Community Cares Network. Their clients can get $15 every Saturday in coupons for produce. We have two vendors that take VIC with programs, and then two with the senior Farmer's Market vendors. So it's made a huge impact, and I just ran some numbers from last, brought us up from the last Saturday market, and we have reimbursed our food vendors over $10,000 in EBT and Double the Bucks this year alone, which is more than we did for the whole year last year. So you can see the impact this having, not just on the people that are using the SNAP benefits, but on the vendors, who it is really helping them a lot. So, we really want to help our small farmers and our makers. And another important thing is that we want this to be a community gathering space, because if you remember, in 2018, we hadn't started the Catalyst Project, there was really no gathering place in downtown High Point. And so one of the purposes for the Farmer's Market was to, to create this space where people to come together. And I think we've done a really good job with that, and it's, it's a really nice, has a good vibe if you've ever been there. It's, it's a lot of fun. And then our wonderful museum on East Lexington. Their primary function is to preserve our local history, but they also do a lot of community programming, and that has grown a lot in the last couple of years. They tried very hard to include their local community, but also to bring in all the new cultures moving into our, into High Point, because, you know, they're preserving the history, but the people that are here now are making history in High Point. And so they're trying to make sure that they're included. So they have, for example, a great relationship with the Latino Center, and their Day of the Dead exhibit just gets more and more incredible every year. So this was from last year's. So it's worth your while to stop by and see that exhibit. So just to wrap up, a few statistics for, just for the library in the last fiscal year. You can see our print items, our circulation has gone up 6%. Our non-print items, that would be DVDs and books on CD, are down 11%, which would make me very sad, except that if you look at the next statistic, our digital checkout is up 13 and a half percent. So you can see the shifting way that people are using our collection. The print materials, um, it stays about the same because we can only have room for so many books. Library cardholders, that dropped because we just finished a purge, we purge our database every three years of inactive accounts. And one thing you may not be aware of is that we have a relationship with Guilford County Schools, so that every student in, has a Greensboro Public Library account and a High Point Public Library account. So, and of course, that waxes and wanes as the student population changes. We're really happy about our, our visits over the last year, up 12.2%. And then our, our reading spaces. Like I said, people want to come to the library, they want to meet here, they want to do business and, and gather. So that's up significantly. And then for the library museum together, you can see our increase in attendance, the number of programs that we offer, up 25%, a 32% increase in attendance. And I'll just tell you that our incredible children's department, and their summer reading attendance was up 7,000 over the last year. And so the 40% increase in accessing online resources is largely driven by the museum. They have an incredible amount of historical information on their website, so you should take a look at that. So what are we about now? We are hoping to finish our entry, entrance enhances in the sensory garden. You'll probably see more activity now. Hopefully, in the next three to four weeks, you'll start to see some plantings in the front. We're waiting for the temperatures to drop. The holdup with the sensory garden is delivery of the vault for the primary water feature, and that should be delivered in the next couple of weeks. And once that's in place, you'll see a lot of activity there.
So Mayor, how long do you think before we can actually go see the sensory garden completed?
Probably first of the year. The front, the, the project in the front will be in the next couple of months. That's pretty simple.
Are those water features, is it a supply chain situation, or?
The vault, that was a lot of it.
And they're, where are they coming from? Are they specially made because of their purpose?
It is.
Is it mass-produced?
No, that's right. Unfortunately, that's, that was the case. So, and they, they, because of the size and where it is, they really couldn't, they have to build around it. So they did everything they could on the periphery, and they're waiting on that. So, it's been frustrating, but I think we're going to see progress soon. I'm very happy to say that the contract with the MHA is, is in place now, and our Peer Navigator started two weeks ago. The social worker will start tomorrow. And the Peer Navigator is already hard at work and has, has made some, some great contacts and made, and helped a lot of people. As I mentioned, the Farmer's Market is going great guns, and we're just struggling to stay ahead of it. So we're working really hard to standardize the operations and make sure that we stay focused on our, on our core values. And there's a major HVAC and roof replacement project that will start at the museum, hopefully the first of November, and we hope that to be finished by the end of the year. And that's the library and museum in a nutshell.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Sizemore. We've got a few minutes for questions. In case there's any questions from council.
Mayor, for some of the services, like the genealogy, does that carry a cost for the public?
No.
That's all right.
Well, only, well, if, if they will charge you to make copies of obituaries, just for the cost of a paper.
Councilmember Moore, say your name.
Mayor, a couple of things. First of all, thank you. I think the people that may be listening or catch in print or something that don't access a library as much, don't realize exactly how much y'all do for the community and how lucky we are to have the library here. So, it certainly is an expense and a big one, but we're unique as a city to have that. It's usually a county function. And, but the, the, go back to the two things, the core value on the Farmer's Market, did it have a good season this year?
Oh, we've had a great season.
Good. I always enjoy going when I can get down there.
Right. And one thing, we, you know, we're stressing healthy, living, access to good food. So, and also, we have cooking demonstrations as often as we can, and health checks. We sort of go back and forth with HP Pharmacy School and Oak Street Health, and they'll do things like, you know, blood pressure checks and that type of thing. And the cooking demonstrations is to show people how you can use the food that you buy there and cook it in a healthy way. And I, and Kristy Spangle, I'm sure you all know, is, she, has, she does cooking demonstrations there, of course. And she told, she was there a couple of weeks ago, and one, two people came up to her and tasted what she was cooking. She was using some squash recipe, and they told her that was the first time they had ever eaten squash in her whole life. So, I mean, so how about that?
One more thing. On the social service piece, which we enacted, and it's no surprise to anybody in this room, but I, it's a kind of an irony thing. I received an email from a concerned citizen, a lady a little bit older than I am, so she's getting older like me. And, but she shared a concern that she'd like to go to the library, but she had been feeling, she's single, I'm assuming, based on the letter, and that she'd been going to Archdale because she felt much safer there. What, I know that we're just getting ready to enact the social services piece, but what are you seeing around that, that arena? Do we still have a lot of people using the library as a place to shelter, if you will?
We, we do see that. But for the most part, they, they keep to themselves, they want to stay under the radar. And we have security guards, and they keep an eye on it. If anybody is acting inappropriately, well, then that's addressed with, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what she was talking about that made her uncomfortable.
Well, I replied with my best answers and the things we had forthcoming, but I haven't been hearing anything as to regular encounters that, that have been negative. So I've just tried to assure her, we're doing all we can to make sure that it's a good place to be.
And for, a good example of how we can use a Peer Navigator, there's a gentleman that comes and just, he obviously has some mental issues. He keeps to himself, he never speaks, but he's off, there's off, he, there's some problems there. And he makes people uncomfortable just because of his presence. And the Peer Navigator, you know, engages him, talks to him, and maybe, and kind of gives him some tips about some things maybe he could do differently that wouldn't put people off. I mean, things that we really aren't qualified to do. So.
Thank you. That's just an additional task you're having to do with.
Well, this, this is, this makes it so much easier. It's helped us a lot already, having him there.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Next on our discussion is overview of quasi-judicial procedures for evidentiary, evidentiary hearings. The city attorney will provide an overview on this item, and with that, we'll pass it to Adam, Attorney.
So as the mayor mentioned, today's topic is quasi-judicial procedures for evidentiary hearings. So why are we here to take, today discussing this? The city has two special use permit, which we often refer to colloquially as SUP or sup. So the city has two sub-applications which will be considered by council at its upcoming meetings in accordance with Section 2.4.12 of the Development Ordinance. For consideration of an SUP application, quasi-judicial procedures must be followed by council. So what are quasi-judicial procedures, and how does council make decisions under them? And what is an evidentiary hearing? So this is going to be the first time for several of the new council members, and really for almost all of the council members, because we have, very rarely have special use permit applications come before council. You often hear us have public hearings where Mr. Herb Shannon does a wonderful job of presenting legislative public hearings, but a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing is different. So if you think about the different types of decisions that are before some of our bodies, if we look here on the left about administrative decisions, so what type of decision is this? It's nondiscretionary. It's perfunctory or ministerial decision, which does not involve the exercise of discretion. So essentially here, applicants fill out an application, as long as it's complete and accurate, they pay any associated fee that may be with the application, and typically, the application will be approved. So who is reviewing administrative decisions? Generally, this is staff. This is not something that would be elevated to the level of city council or any of the other appointed boards or commissions. The purpose of administrative decisions is essentially to verify compliance with the Development Ordinance. Is there a hearing? No. There is no public input. This again is handled at the staff level. I would say that our staff does this multiple times a day, probably every day of the year. Examples include plaques, site plans, construction drawings, building permits, signed permits, and several, you know, various other matters that the administrative staff handles on a daily basis. So that's one type of decision that generally you all, as the city council and the governing body, will never, will never see. Another type of decision is the legislative decision. So this is a discretionary decision. Who, who, who makes these decisions? It's city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So these are the legislative public hearings that you're used to seeing, and it's within your discretion on how you wish to make these decisions, so long as you don't violate any law or constitutional principles. So, so long as you're not basing a decision because of a protected class or something, what is a bigger state or federal law, you have a wide, wide breadth of how you decide to make these decisions. You will also recall that very recently, the city council has delegated a lot of its zoning decisions to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you all are the two bodies that make legislative decisions. The purpose of them is to set policy and to enact regulations. A, there is a legislative public hearing required, and examples of legislative decisions include rezonings and appeals of them, annexations, ordinance and any amendments to ordinances, the comprehensive plan and any amendments to the comp plan. So this is something you all very recently did with the Comp 2045 Plan, development agreements, and others. So this is kind of where you all are most familiar and what you see most frequently. So the third type of decision is a quasi-judicial decision, which is an evidentiary decision. Who, who makes these types of decisions? It's the Board of Adjustment, which we friendly refer to as the BOA, the Historic Preservation Commission or the HPC, and city council very rarely. The purpose of quasi-judicial decisions is to ensure that standards are met. And here, it's an evidentiary hearing, so it's going to look very different than what you see typically for a legislative public hearing. Examples for the BOA, and remember, the Board of Adjustment and Historic Preservation Commission are two boards that you all appoint the members to sit on. So the examples of quasi-judicial decisions that the BOA hears are variances, appeals of these administrative decisions over here on the left, alternate design requests, and reasonable accommodation requests. The type of quasi-judicial decision that the HPC hears is certificates of appropriateness to see if whatever change is being made to the house is appropriate based on the special character of the historic district with which it's in. And then council makes these decisions for special use permits. So I kind of wanted to give the landscape of how this is different. We're going to dive now into the quasi-judicial. But these really, this is kind of the breadth of different decisions, and hopefully you all are comfortable in the legislative area, and now we're going to get you comfortable in quasi-judicial. So the quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing is like a court hearing. Council will be acting as both the judge and the jury. So you'll be acting as the judge because you're assuring that the procedural safeguards are adhered to and applying the facts to the law. And you're also the jury because you're weighing the evidence and making findings of fact and conclusions of law. Who presides, who presides over the hearing? It's the chair, which means here it will be the mayor presiding over the hearing. The, the mayor will also swear in witnesses. You'll, he'll recognize speakers and council members, rule on objections or requests, and decides on the standing of parties. It's advisable to allow every speaker to be heard, but the mayor may limit and/or cut off testimony that is irrelevant, repetitive, incompetent, inflammatory, or hearsay. Council's responsibilities during quasi-judicial hearings. The applicant in a quasi-judicial hearing is entitled to impartial council members. Council members should not conduct any independent factual research or investigation into the application under consideration. At the beginning of the hearing, council members must disclose relevant information, which includes any possible conflict of interest. And if you do think that you may have a conflict of interest, please consult me before the hearing so that we can discuss and confirm that it is an actual statutory conflict of interest. Any ex parte communications. Ex parte communications is any conversation or communication that you have had outside of the hearing. So everything is supposed to happen during the evidentiary hearing on the day that it's on the agenda. Site visits is something else that you'll need to disclose. Generally, you know, it used to be the case that people liked doing site visits. Now I think that there is a little bit of risk doing that, because if you do a site visit, you may interact with somebody who's there, which would then lead to ex parte communications, one of the property owners. If you're familiar with the site anyways, you may not need a site visit, but if you do make a site visit, you need to disclose that at the beginning of the hearing. And you also need to disclose if you have any personal knowledge or professional expertise relevant to the case. So if you happen to be an architect, and it was relevant to the opinion that you were going to give and perhaps make decision based off of, you need to disclose, I'm an architect, I'm a land use planner, something like that.
And Attorney, with folks who, given that, I know one of the ones we're hearing about is about a school, does that count when you talk about expertise relevant to the subject matter in terms of folks who have spent time in education?
You could disclose that if you wanted to, if you were a teacher. Typically, it's expertise related to things involving land use.
Land use.
Yeah. So that would be an engineer, perhaps a general contractor, a land use planner, an architect, perhaps a traffic engineer, things that are relevant. But you, you could absolutely disclose that if you wished to. It, it shouldn't be that relevant to the decision that you're making, though, regardless of what the project is, and we'll kind of look at that once we get to deliberation. So legal representation. This is also going to be somewhat, or has the potential to be different than what we typically see. So often, if you see a representative or an attorney presenting or speaking on behalf of an applicant for a legislative matter, they're certainly acting in a representation capacity, but it's not something that's required. Sometimes you'll see the developer, if it's a company, you might see an attorney, you might see a consultant, perhaps. It's very specific here, though, under North Carolina law, who can provide representation. So only an attorney can represent a corporation or an individual in a quasi-judicial proceeding. There was a state bar opinion, relevant, state bar opinion for the unauthorized practice advisory opinion in 2006, which came out and made this very, very specific. While a non-attorney land use prof- While a non attorney, land use professional, for example, architects, engineers, and land use planners may appear and testify as to factual matters they are qualified to testify about. Only licensed attorneys can present and introduce evidence, examine and cross examine witnesses, make legal arguments as to how the standards are met, and advocate for results on behalf of others. So often here during BOA and HPC hearings, we'll have folks come that want to get up there and make arguments, or advocate, and if it's a contested matter, perhaps cross examine. So it's very important that that cannot happen unless they're an engaged attorney licensed to practice law. So I'm going to go through three slides here related to the sequence for how to expect how the evidentiary hearing is going to go. I'll also provide just a handout to you all about these slides, because this gets a little dense. But again, this is going to look very different than what you're used to. So the first will be an introduction to quasi judicial hearings, where there's an explanation of how the evidentiary hearings work. This is not only for your benefit, this is for the benefit of everybody in the audience that day of the council meeting, so they understand what's about to happen. Then we will open the hearing, where the mayor opens evidentiary hearing. Conflicts of interest and ex parte communications are up next. The mayor will ask if any member has a conflict of interest or ex parte communication they wish to disclose, and the mayor will call for a vote to excuse any members, regardless of whether it's voluntary or not. So typically, when there's a matter, you offer your conflict of interest and the fact that you would like to recuse yourself, and then the council has to vote to accept that excusal. This is, number four is one that is very different. So here is a party standing determination. The mayor will ask if any other individuals, aside from the staff and applicant, wish to participate as a party in the case. Aside from staff and applicant, only those who have an ownership or lease interest in the property, individuals who can show they will suffer special damages distinct from the rest of the community as a result of the decision can be a party. Only a party may call witnesses, cross examine other witnesses, present evidence, and make legal arguments. So public or other testimony by non parties may be allowed at the discretion of the chair, which chair will be the mayor, but it's limited to simple testimony, and that individual is not acting as a party. And that's very important, because only parties can appeal decisions as well. So going through the standing determination is a very important part. If it's unclear whether an individual has standing to participate as a party, the mayor will conduct a standing determination, and then council as a whole will vote to determine if you all feel that that individual has standing to be a party based on the factors. And I can guide you through that when and if that happens. Most often, you'll see neighbors that come and want to speak, and perhaps feel that they should be heard, and they should be able to have, offer testimony and cross examine. Sometimes neighbors may be represented by attorneys. So that attorney could, if it's determined that they are a party, cross examine both either the staff or the applicant. Next will be the swearing in of the witnesses, which will be done all at one time at the dais. Next is opening statements. So again, this is different from public hearings, and this is something like you would see in a court of law. So if the parties are represented by council, most likely, that's when we're going to have opening statements. The mayor will ask if the parties want to provide an opening statement. And hopefully, if there are attorneys involved, generally, I have a pre hearing meeting with attorneys to determine if we're going to do opening statements and closing arguments. Next up is staff presentation, testimony, and a recommendation. When staff is done, the mayor then asks if applicant or other parties have any questions for staff. So typically, you know, you will do this, but you'll have the questions for staff. And then this will be an opportunity for cross examination of staff, and then whether council has any questions after the cross examination. So after staff goes, then the applicant will go. When the applicant is done, same process, any questions for the applicant, any cross examination, any follow up questions. And then if there is public and other testimony, the mayor will ask if anyone other than the parties who wish to provide testimony, this would be like public comments. Again, this part is at the discretion of the mayor as the presiding official. If he wants to open it up for anybody else that might have an opinion about it, but you all have to take that into account for that it's not expert opinion, it's non party, and just consider it. The mayor can also limit it if it's repetitive, inflammatory, the things we talked about, hearsay. Next, after all of the initial testimonies presented, is rebuttal witnesses. The mayor asks if anybody wants to call a rebuttal witness. Again, most of the time, you would see this, is if there's both the applicant and staff are represented by attorneys, and if it's being contested. So if staff is not recommending approval. And then the closing statements or arguments are presented by attorneys. The mayor asks if they wish to provide them. Hopefully, we would know that ahead of time in the sequence if that was going to happen. So then is deliberation and vote. The evidentiary hearing will remain open, so council can ask any clarifying questions while deliberation and vote. So a couple of important things here, and why this is different, is that council's decision must be based upon competent material and substantial evidence presented during the hearing, and the application of the evidence to the standards. So it has to be very specific type, and I'll explain what CMS, competent material, substantial evidence is, and then it has to be applied to the standards for the specific case, which in this case is going to be the special use permits. Council's liking an application or a special use, you like the project, you think it's a great idea, it's completely irrelevant to a quasi judicial decision, and it should not be considered. Council should engage in active discussion about the decision and address each one of the required findings, which will be in the proposed written decision. And then a simple majority is needed for a special use. For different types of decisions and different quasi judicial settings, sometimes a higher standard of forfeits is required, for example, for variance. Here, it is just a simple majority. Then the mayor will close the hearing, and move to the, after the vote is taken, the mayor closes the hearing and moves to the next agenda item. Does anybody have any questions at this point? That kind of finishes the sequence of how the hearing is going to go.
Can somebody appeal the decision?
We will get to that in the answers, yes. Yes, yes, yes. So what are these special review standards that you have to very specifically base your decisions on? For a special use permit, the special use shall be approved based upon, shall be approved upon a finding that the applicant demonstrates the proposed special use. And note, there's five standards here, and it's "and," so they must meet all five of these. The first is that it will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed. The special use complies with all required standards, conditions, and specifications of this ordinance, which is the Development Ordinance, including Chapter Four uses. The special use will not substantially injure the value of the abutting land or the special use is a public necessity. The special use will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located. And the special use is in general conformity with the city's adopted policy guidance. So how are you going to know if you, I'm sorry?
Can you go back one?
Yes.
So you got an "or" in number three. So we've got our binders on, like, legal attorneys, and it's a public necessity. But it may negatively affect the value of abutting land.
So the special use will not injure the value of the abutting land. Or, so either one works for standard number three. Or the special use is a public necessity. So the argument by the applicant could be either one of those to meet standard number three.
How do we determine if it's a public necessity?
You'll put on that evidence. So when we look at evidence, who has the burden to prove these five standards? So the evidence, like I mentioned earlier, must be in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160D 406D. It must be competent, material, and substantial. The evidentiary standards apply to everyone. So this is staff, when staff makes their presentation, the applicant, any opponents, if somebody is determined to have legal standing and be a party, and council, when you're making your decision. Hearsay testimony is inadmissible. So if somebody gets up there and says, "Well, I talked to a local realtor, and the realtor said this is really going to hurt the neighborhood." That's hearsay. Hearsay is defined as out of court statement offered for the truth of the matter asserted therein. So if they want to talk about property values, then they need to have the appraiser present and giving expert testimony about property values. Only experts may offer opinion testimony, for example, property values, projected traffic impacts. So a traffic impact analysis, the TIA, would have to be offered by a traffic engineer and other technical matters like that. And to answer Dr. Harmon's question, the applicant bears the burden of production. So that means they bear the burden of proof. The applicant has to present evidence that's competent, material, and substantial for meeting all five of these. So they're going to, you know, again, that burden is on them. It's not necessarily on the, certainly not on council to know those things, but to hear from both staff and the applicant. It'll be very straightforward if staff is in support of the applicant, if they're recommending approval, but the burden technically falls on the applicant. So then is the quasi judicial written decision. So a decision involving the finding of facts regarding a specific application of an ordinance and the exercise of discretion when applying the standards of the ordinance. So this comes right from 160D, which is the General Statute, and talks about, once you've voted, you have to have a written decision that clearly presents the finding of facts of why you voted the way that you did and believe if the standards were met or not met. It involves the process of applying general law under 160D to the particular facts of the situation. And remember, those facts have to be presented to you during the evidentiary hearing. It can't be something that you talked to neighbors about, or heard about beforehand, or did your own research on. It has to be entered into the record that day of the evidentiary hearing. Staff will include a proposed written decision in its staff report. Council may vote to adopt a proposed written decision as prepared. So imagine the most streamlined version of this, where staff is recommending approval. Staff has put in their staff report a recommendation of approval, and they put in a proposed written decision. And so after you vote, you can vote also then to adopt the written decision right then and there, and the matter does not have to come back to you again. If, though, it's necessary, where your, council makes a decision that is not reflected in the proposed written decision prepared by staff in the staff report, then council will direct staff to revise the written decision in accordance with its decision, the decision that you made that day. And then most likely, this will come back before you again to then adopt then the proposed written decision that is, you know, that follows along with the decision that you made that day when you voted. The proposed written decision is really important, because this is what triggers appeal. So council's decision may be appealed to North Carolina Superior Court by filing a petition for writ of certiorari within 30 days. And the 30 days, the clock starts with the later of when the proposed written decision is received or when it's filed with the clerk, if required by that part. A petition may be filed only by a petitioner who has standing to challenge the decision being appealed. So again, at the beginning of the hearing, where we go through a standing determination to see if a party actually has standing, that would only be the only other person besides the staff, the applicant, and then whoever's determined to have standing that can appeal to Superior Court. And when you go to Superior Court for certiorari, essentially, they're looking at the record, and they're looking to see if there was any egregious erroneous decisions made based on what's in the record. So if in the record, essentially, an applicant stood up, smiled, and said, "Do you have any questions?" and didn't put on any testimony, which has happened before, you know, there would be no record then if somebody were to have appealed that, for Superior Court to look and see if you all made the right decisions. Certainly, staff puts on, you know, the best evidence that it can, but if you vote to deny staff's recommendation, or if you vote different from staff's recommendation, we need to make sure that all parties are meeting their burden of proof and that the evidence is in the record right there. So I know that that was a lot of dense information, but I wanted you all to, I want you all and the public to understand that this is different than what city council normally hears, and that you have, it's my understanding that I believe there's going to be two cases coming before you over the next month or so related to the special uses. And so when that happens, I will be, as I always am, the attorney for council. So I will be there helping the mayor preside over the hearing. If you all have any questions on what is competent material and substantial evidence, if there's, you know, issues with voting or determining if a party has standing or not, I'll be there to advise you through the process. I believe that for at least one of these, that the applicant will have an attorney, the other applicant should have an attorney as well, and then I'll have a separate engaged outside attorney supporting our staff for this, so that I don't have a conflict, and that I can be advising council directly. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there like a video, another example of the city council doing this well that maybe we could watch both of our hands?
Well, you all have come to...
What, put some of the video there?
And, I mean, our Board of Adjustment and Historic Preservation Commission does these as well.
I'll start down there.
But, you know, certainly, I can see if there's any other videos that have been put on, perhaps by the school of government or something like that, to see and mock one. But, you know, essentially, as you can see from the sequence, and like I said, I'll give you an outline of proceedings, so that you all kind of are familiar with the sequence as the mayor is guiding you through it. But it's essentially a court hearing. So opening statements, each party puts on testimony, opportunities for cross examination and rebuttal, closing arguments, and then deliberation and voting. And so the important part, acting as the judge, is making sure that the proceeding is done correctly, and the jury is that you all are making the decision based upon the five standards and only what was put into evidence during that time. So I can certainly put together some kind of, you know, pack it with some additional resources for whoever would like to take a deeper dive into it. But we thought it was really important to do this ahead of when the actual cases come before you. So if you have questions between now and when those cases do come before you, which I think the plan is for them to be at the one at each meeting in October now, that was a shift as well due to scheduling. So it would be at the first and second meetings in October, if everything goes according to plan. So if anything pops up between now and then, just let me know. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Madam Attorney? Okay. Here now, we'll go ahead and transition to our next agenda item, which is a closed session item, without interchain motion to go in closed session. Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Moore. Any discussion on a motion to go in closed session? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we'll go in closed session. The ayes have it, and we'll go in closed session.